The meeting is called to order. Welcome to the December 20th, 2017 Board of Education meeting. From 6:00 to 7:00, we were in executive session talking about BCUEA contract negotiations and some personnel matters. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dave Hurst.
Charmaine Boudesinger.
Meredith Moyer.
Jody Monroe.
Christine Beck.
Lynn Lenhart.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Michael Cooper.
Holly Dellenbach.
And Judy Kehoe.
Pig students, how many pig students we have here tonight?
I can't open up.
Do we have any Eagle graduates? Oh, so is this the first time back? Oh, nice. Oh, nice. Oh, awesome. Well, you are required to stay till 9:00 o'clock unless the meeting gets out earlier, and let's hope it might get out earlier tonight, so, welcome. Can I get a motion to approve the December 6th, 2017 minutes?
To move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention? Motion carries. We also need to approve the minutes of the December 13th, 2017 Special Board Meeting. Motion to approve.
To move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Do we have anybody here from the Student Senate this evening? Okay, so we'll go right on to the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Beck. I wanted to provide an update on Clarksville. As you know, we, back in the spring, we voted to do a purchase agreement with the sheriffs, Albany County sheriffs, to eventually sell Clarksville over a five-year period. We received recent correspondence from Albany County asking us to amend that agreement, which basically they want to pay instead of over a five-year period, they want to pay for it all upfront. So that does require the Board to reconsider that and do a re-vote because it does change the terms of the agreement. So we will put some information out on the website, and at the January 3rd meeting, we can have a discussion about what the changes are. We'll review what the agreement was and the change, and then the Board would need to take a vote on that on January 17th at that Board meeting.
Yes. Right? Oh, okay, I didn't know.
So that's Clarksville. I also wanted to let the Board know, and you have hard copies of it, that Capital Region Planning Commission did provide us with the enrollment projections. They're fairly consistent with what was provided to us last year, basically showing a decrease in enrollment over the next several years, also information about the developments. Last year, we did ask the town to provide us with more current information on the development process, so we'll gather that, and then I'll be sharing that information at the State of the Schools presentation at the February, the first February meeting. I also want to thank all of our students and staff and the community. We had our Holiday Caring and Sharing Drive on Saturday morning where families come, and we have food and gift cards for them. Through that program, we raised over $14,000 to provide families, and families also got two very large bags of food. I'd also like to thank Kathy Johnston and her specialized staff. They really do all the coordination, so thank you. It's really a great event, so it was nice to provide that. And I also like to turn it over to Judy Kehoe to do a quick update on the solar power agreement that we spoke about last meeting and provide you with just a little information about the federal tax update.
Yes. The first thing is the power purchase agreement. As I had noted at the last meeting, the district received what's called a 60-day letter from the developer that asked us to make a decision relative to whether or not we wanted to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with them to charge them a certain amount of money. The property, because it is a solar project, is otherwise exempt from taxes. In speaking with our attorneys and speaking with the developer, we would like to send a letter to the developer advising them that we are interested in considering a pilot and to set up some meetings. That essentially frees us up to do anything from zero to up to what the developer would pay if they were, in fact, fully taxable, but by sending the letter within the 60-day period, we essentially preserve our rights to have those conversations with them. In the interim period, I will continue to gather some information about what that might look like. I'll have some discussions with Forefront Power, who is the holder of that power purchase agreement, and then I'll have more tangible information to report back to the Board and the community at a later date. And then the second piece that Ms. Monroe mentioned is we've been getting a number of phone calls in the last few days from homeowners who would like to prepay their school taxes for the fall of 2018, doing a little bit of tax planning so that they can preserve their deductions. I understand the town's phones have been ringing quite a bit as well. The official answer is you may not prepay your fall 2018 school taxes before December 31st, 2017. So I just wanted you to be aware that that was out there and what the answer was relative to school taxes.
Okay, that's everything in my Superintendent's Report. On the Board of Education front, first of all, thank you to the administrators and everybody who came out to the Care for Sharing. I heard it was a successful day. I did hear that the majority of you were all there, and it was just a great event. And also, just to talk about this, The Much Ado About Nothing was the last two weekends, the second and third weekend in December, and I have the pleasure of seeing all six shows, and they were wonderful, and it was just a joy to see how the students who have worked so hard for several months have progressed from show number one to show number six and what a great community is and how much these kids work really hard to put on a good show here. And to thank Mr. Year for his vision and his creativity because it is pretty spectacular, and Ms. Sharp for assisting him this year. We were very fortunate to have the involvement that we did, and I see some parents in the audience, so we're a big family, big crew here, so thank you to all of you that are out there tonight, so.
Charmaine, if you saw all six, did you notice me in the screen there? You know, the screaming?
Oh, I did. No, it was Lynn. No.
Well, the timing actually would have been right, but...
Yeah, exactly. It would have been right, so, but anyway.
But younger, but...
I have a number of things, but I'm also going to have a request. Because of the setup of this room and the acoustics, if people could speak directly into their microphones, it's going to help me hear you, and I'll flag you if I can't hear you. But I did see the play, I think it was on Friday night, and echo what Mrs. Beck said, but also I want to appreciate the time that the students and the cast, the cast and the crew and the staff put in at a particularly busy time of the year. So it was very creative and very enjoyable. In terms of upcoming trainings, I noticed that in the District 7, or whatever they call it, Lynn, the Area 7 Newsletter, that for folks who want some additional training opportunities, I know there's a superintendent evaluation workshop on March 23rd, and we will be engaging in that as a board for newer members. If you're free or if you haven't had the chance to kind of get up to speed to what that, the nature of that process is, there's a workshop on March 23rd. I think they're all posted, I think, on, but if you look at that Area 7 Newsletter, there are some things, and there's the state mandated training on June 15th and 16th if you weren't able to attend that. A couple of things on, after the last meeting, we had a long discussion on selective classification. As I drove home, there were two things that came to mind as a parent of a selected classification athlete, athletes. Two things that came to mind was I have been in the stands when I have heard parents of opposing teams say, not realizing that I was a Bethlehem parent and whose, which athlete was my kid, "That kid should not be on this team because of the level of expertise." So that's something we should be, bear in mind, that when you have an athlete who is playing at a certain level on a team where a level perhaps a little bit lower is expected, parents from opposing teams notice and make comments. And the other thing is I've seen sometimes particularly talented teams run up a score against an opposing team, and that is considered poor sportsmanship. So to think about if more talented athletes are left to play at a grade-level team, both of those things can happen, and they do reflect on the district. But the thing I really want to talk about was I attended Cultivating Excellence and Equity Seminar on Diversity and Social Justice with a number of members of the staff here. It was sponsored by the Superintendent's Association. I know Dave Domell was there, Mike Klugman, Marissa Bell, who was the supervisor, Nick Petritroni, Lisa Carr, and Kristen Connor from the Guidance Department, Ms. Monroe and Mr. Hurst here. And I know that some other Board members were interested in attending and weren't able to. I just want to really, I have some material about, from the retreat. We had some presentations, we had some keynotes, and then we engaged in dialogue and discussion between ourselves and then with other districts about the imperative of addressing some of the issues of diversity and social justice in the district, in different districts, and why. And I also want to just affirm the team, first of all, the Bethlehem Center, a significant number of people there, and the energy and enthusiasm from the people who attended from Bethlehem, the staff members, was exciting. I didn't know it was there, and not that I didn't know the commitment wasn't there, but being with them for a day was hearing people say, "We need to do this, we must do this, we can do this." And during one of the discussions, I did say, "It takes courage, it takes leadership." And I, if the Board has not engaged in that discussion just because of the different things we focused on or the time commitment, I'm going to encourage the Board to engage in discussion with Ms. Monroe and her team on moving this forward. I used to work in higher education. A lot of change happens because bad things happen. We used to call them incidents, and that drives change. I don't think we should wait for incidents. I know that some students have been talking about their experiences in these schools and that things do need to change, and from that team that was there, I was more of a bystander, I didn't want to be, because I was a Board member, I didn't want to be driving the discussion, people said, "We can do this." And so I think the Board needs to get up to speed on what the vision is and engage in that process with Ms. Monroe and her team. I know there is this Strategic Planning Committee, I'm one of the members of that committee. I don't think this, this can be intended with it, but it doesn't have to wait. So that was, I was incredibly inspired. I heard staff members said, "We can do this, and we can do this now, and we must do this now." And so if the Board hasn't been part of that discussion, I'm going to encourage us to be, join that discussion and let Mrs. Monroe share her vision at some point and her commitment to this. It is part of her superintendent evaluation, the Board put it in there, so that was things I wanted to add. Thank you for the amount of time.
Charmaine, I just want to clarify, because you said it was sponsored by the New York State Council of School Superintendents, but it was co-sponsored by the State School Boards Association and the School Administrators Association, and there was one other group, I can't remember. But it, so, I mean, that's, because someone might wonder, why were you there?
Yes, we were all invited, and I was able to attend, yes.
You're championing a good cause, and I think Ms. Monroe is aware of that, and, I'm sorry, I'm a little far away. Move it a little closer, sorry about that. I think you're championing a good cause, and I'm certainly on board. I think probably all the Board members are on board with making sure that we look at things that we can do to make that happen in our schools, and I would really like to talk to you more about that and what we can do and to move it along quicker. So, thank you.
Yeah, I did not attend all six performances. I only got to two of them, and I had my daughter, who used to do Shakespeare, as my right hand to tell me, you know, what was good, what wasn't good, and she had nothing but, "Oh, my God, oh, my God, this is phenomenal." I've gotten a really good appreciation of Shakespeare from watching Mr. Year's productions and the students and the parents and the time they put in. It's a tremendous job that you all do. I see some of you here, and you should know how much it's appreciated not only by those of us in the community, but by some of your alums who come back to see you. Nicely done.
Yeah, I saw, actually, the last performance, which I assumed would be the best.
Yes, it was the best.
And it was outstanding. I just thought it was just so creative. You know, obviously, we thank everyone who was involved in all the work, recognize all the work that was involved, but just even the creativity of taking The Beatles on a Hard Day's Night, combining With Much Ado About Nothing, was just a great, I give, some people were not really happy with Shakespeare. I mean, that was such a nice touch.
It was.
A creative touch to it, and I thought, worked very well.
And Mr. Year worked on that idea with a prior student, Jack Levine, so it was, the concept was created some time ago when they did a production of Much Ado About Nothing in Woodstock. They were both in it, and I think they just collaborated on it and came up with the idea, which was very clever. But Mr. Fishbein made me think of two things. My sons came Saturday night, and my older son is 20, and he said, "Wow, Mom, this was great. I loved the costumes, the black and white theme, The Beatles, it was really engaging." And then my 15-year-old son, this is my favorite comment, "It was, it was okay, but I don't know why they had to do it in Shakespeare." So I had two different perspectives, but they both made it through three hours, so it was great. And the last thing I wanted to comment on was food service, because I don't think we have a recognized food service, but I had, I was in school last week, and I was walking through the foyer by the cafeteria, and I smelled really good food. I said, "Do you know what? I'm going to try to buy something." And so I went up to the little window, and there were all the kids in line, and they all knew the food service people, and they were so nice and friendly, and my daughter Delaney had a free period, and she happened to see me and comes running along, she goes, "How about I buy you a bagel?" And I'm like, "Okay, you can buy me a bagel with my money." But it was great. I mean, the service was fantastic. I really didn't realize, like, how much we are now providing to the students in regards to food at all times of the day and what we can offer, and it was just, it was really, it was a good experience, and I wanted to recognize that publicly because I don't think many people get that opportunity to go in as a parent or other faculty member, you don't get that opportunity. So I thought it was great, so, thank you.
Pass that along.
Yeah. That's good. So tonight's presentation is on RTI, an update on our RTI for Behavior Program, and we have the interim elementary principal, Ms. Laurel Jones, here to introduce our speaker. And help with the presentation.
Is that mic on?
I don't know.
I don't think it's on.
It's on.
Just tap.
If it's really close.
Oh, it's on now. Hi, everybody, my name is Laurel Jones. I'm the interim principal at Eagle right now. I also wear some other hats in the district, and one of them is the administrator for RTI. So this is Susan Isguardo. She is a new position in the district this year. She's the Behavior Coach as we roll out RTI for Behavior. She's our expert. And so we're here to explain RTI for Behaviors for you and let you know where we are in the process.
Switch.
So, to give you a little background, we were going to let you know what is RTI for Behavior. And to do that, we want to let you know that it is called a variety of different names in the research and literature that you may see. So you may see it referred to as PBIS, you might see it as RTI, you might see it as Multi-tiered System of Support, or a Multi-tiered Behavior Framework. All of those things, whatever you call it, is all based in this framework that we are going to explain to you of a tiered system approach to responding and preventing behavioral escalation. So we're going to show you a quick video to help get you in the spirit of PBIS and RTI for Behaviors.
We hope that song's not stuck in your head. So RTI for Behaviors follows the same system as RTI for Academics. That's kind of the big picture here of what we're doing, and we're focusing on intervening early to prevent escalation. So we want to teach kids what the expected behavior is. A lot of times, we assume it, we mention it, and we don't really go as far as teaching it, and so that they know the expectations and have a consistent response. So to do this, we have a lot of committees who are working on it together. So we have a district-level committee, and we get together and we talk through things at a district perspective. Each building has a behavioral team, and these people are helping with the rollout in their building. Not all of the rules are going to be the same from building to building. We'd like all the core values to be the same, but, you know, expectations in the Eagle Cafeteria may be different than expectations in the Elsmere Cafeteria based on the culture of our school, and that's okay. And then the third team that we have is Child Study for Academics, also has now the aspect of Child Study for Behaviors. So if teachers feel like they need some support in helping deal with some behaviors that students are presenting, then they can come to this committee and get suggestions on things to try. So Tier One is what we're focusing on, and this is like two- to three-year process. It's not going to happen overnight. We need to make sure that we're rolling it out systematically, that everybody understands the process, that everyone is on board, and that everyone's voices are heard. So I'm going to turn it over to Sue, who's going to really give you some ideas about the pieces that go into Tier One.
So we're working, I need to go higher. Sorry. It's okay. We're working on several components of Tier One, and every building has a checklist that they're focusing on to work through what makes sense for their building. It has all of the same components. So one of the components that you will get a detailed presentation about in January are school-wide counseling lessons. So every classroom is now getting exposure to social-emotional lessons to teach coping strategies, self-awareness of their own emotions, and self-regulation. And you will get further information about that. But part of Tier One is making sure all kids have the same exposure to resources, and one of those preventative aspects is giving those self-reg skills at all classrooms. The second piece that we're working on is school-wide expectations, and those are going to be based on our district core values. And as we have a perfect place right now to demonstrate this, the core values that we have, that we're using right now at Eagle in the cafeteria are safe, responsible, and respectful. Those are the core values in this space that would be throughout this school. After we get back from break, we will be surveying the staff to have them select the three core values that are the Bethlehem Core Values for Students K-12. And then the building-level teams will take them back to their buildings, and those will become the core values in all aspects of the school that we explicitly teach. So after we have those core values, we explicitly teach the students what that looks like in those environments in their school. So what does it look like to be responsible in the cafeteria? What does it look like to be responsible in your classroom? What does it look like to be responsible in the hallway? And really making sure that we teach those just as explicitly as we teach students to read or write or do addition. In that as well, we have consistent response when expectations are not met. So how are we prompting students? What common language can we use for students to help them succeed and help them reach those expectations? In addition to that, there's a piece of positive acknowledgement of making sure that we're acknowledging students when they are meeting our expectations, when they are succeeding in using the skills that we are teaching them for the expected behaviors. So this is an example of a matrix. Commonly, you will see a matrix when you see schools that have school-wide expectations, and what it does is outline the core values. So this is an example, their core values are pride, acceptance, wise, and safety, and it outlines behaviorally what that looks like in every environment, assemblies, bathrooms, you think of every little place in the school and what that looks like and how you can demonstrate our values throughout the community of our schools. For positive acknowledgement, right now, we are piloting this at several of the elementary schools in lunch and recess, where we find common issues in meeting behavioral expectations. So right now, we were focusing on respect at Eagle, and there's a sign over in the corner that is a giant sign of respect, and the students were signing that based on the data that we collected for students being recognized for being respectful at lunch and recess. The students are receiving these tickets that go into grade-level buckets that give them some acknowledgement that they are meeting our expectations. It recognizes them without giving them stuff, but giving them some feedback on meeting our expectations and being safe, responsible, and respectful. Those tickets are pulled weekly, and students are able to select social reinforcement, like having lunch with a particular adult, or having their table decorated for their peers, and they get to design and decorate their table setting. This picture here is the monthly class that had the most respectful behavior based on our data, got balloons and little cones that said respectful, responsible, and safe, and it was so enjoyable for them, and you hear kids talking about those values and how they play out into that environment. So we hope that this will be a system that will spread out across the school, so schoolwide students are being recognized for those behaviors. Another important piece that drives all of this is data collection, and the data collection pieces for that are looking at universal screenings of students, which are questionnaires that will provide us some information of not only those externalizing behaviors or the behaviors that we see from students that usually people are drawn to that attention, know that those are students that are louder, or those are problematic, or seen as problematic behaviors, but also will give us indicators for students that have internalizing behaviors that are quieter, that do escalate to safety risks as they get older, that we might not be noticing. Are those students withdrawn? Do they have peers? Are they, do they look like they have a flat emotional response most of the time? And it prompts us to have conversations, to talk about those students and how we're best supporting them. Are they connected with peers and adults in the building? And how can we help them in those things? We'll also look at data collection of nurse visits. Some of the frequent flyers in the nurse's office have some behavioral needs that they might have some skills that we need to address to help them perform better in school, and also looking at the minor behavior incidents, those little things, and how those things build up across school environments, and the major things that happen, and making sure that we use those and respond to them by providing intervention to teach replacement So what are we doing in the next steps? So after break, as I had mentioned, we are going to survey the staff to select our core values. The core values will... The core values will then go back to those building levels. The elementary and the middle school will be looking at those and outlining their matrix to demonstrate those core values throughout their buildings. And they are going to do a tiered fidelity inventory, which is a Rubrik system that allows us to create an action plan and also monitor how we are progressing through that action plan to achieve a high level of fidelity in our implementation of these systems and processes. So not only are we checking them off our checklist, are they continuing to be used? Are they used throughout the school with fidelity?
So a big... Sorry. A big piece of this is professional development. So we need to teach our faculty and our staff, including bus drivers, noon hour aides. Everybody has a piece of this, and this is a little bit new for some folks. So our job is to really make sure that everyone has enough training and enough understanding as we move forward here. So we're using our continuous improvement time district-wide to talk about RTI for Behaviors.
So in our continuous improvement time, so far, we have talked about the overview and the purpose of this system and these processes, giving people the background and the understanding of why these exist, that they're not new, that PBIS systems have been around since 2008 and have been in schools and are used throughout schools across the nation and across the world and are having... showing success in student outcomes. We've also discussed the functions of behavior and the roots and science of why students engage in some behaviors and how you can address that based on their function of their behavior, and common language across the schools, such as "big deal, little deal," to help students recognize if something is a big deal or a little deal, and help them have this framework where no matter which adult interacts with them, they can have this common language that will support them through procedures. Our future topics will include protecting yourself from burnout. We surveyed staff with a bunch of topics and had them rank what would be of interest to them. And behavior can create some stress and stressful environments for teachers. And so protecting yourself from burnout, how... What are the strategies that you do to have your own emotional well-being while dealing with things that are stressful to you? Also, classroom management systems, what that looks like, moving beyond thinking of classroom management as just a clip chart, and thinking of all of different things that go into classroom management systems, and role-playing some of these things with scripts and strategies so that people get that hands-on experience in that training. In addition to providing... Helping to coach these teams to go through this process at the building level and giving CI, I'm also offering coaching to classroom teachers on a voluntary basis. So the faculty, upon request, are asking for feedback in a specific area in regards to whole-group lessons or whole-group management, and I will go into the classroom and use the New York State Quality Indicator of Behavioral Systems and give them some feedback on all of the indicators that New York State has identified as having a strong classroom management system, which includes your detailed instruction, your engagement levels, how you teach expectations. Is that evident... Is that evident there, evidence there for the observer when they come in? And so I give them that feedback, and then I sit down and collaborate with them to solve some of the problems that they have in their classroom or areas that they have requested feedback on.
So is there... Is there a plan to do any outreach with parents, families, to convey some of this information home?
Yes.
Because it seems like it would be helpful to have common language at home and school.
That is one of the main components of this as well. So as students get older, you want to get the student voice into those systems. So PBIS in the middle school and high school gets more student involvement. You bring parent involvement in so that that common language goes home. Parents have a say in helping us develop that common language and that we share out and work together as a community, our school community, to have those core values expand not only on our school grounds but throughout the Bethlehem community. So that would be through parent trainings, also just having that question-and-answer with parents, sending them home the common language that we are using, some of the scripts that we are using, getting their feedback on the acknowledgement systems and the corrective actions that we use for students when we're trying to respond to them consistently and having some feedback from there, and having open communication to develop it as a team.
I would just like to reinforce that. That seems really positive to me. My children have come home with some worksheets and told me about, you know, their guidance counselor coming into their classrooms and what they've talked about, and I thought it sounded wonderful, but I wanted more information, you know, so that I could have... Continue that conversation at home. So any information you could give to parents just about what's being discussed and the common language, we would really appreciate.
Outreach to the parent-teacher associations at the various schools might be helpful, too.
The parent-teacher association at Eagle actually provided us with some of... The younger kids needed some tangibles for their tickets, so they have bands that say "I am caring" or "I am responsible." And the PTO, after a short conversation and presentation from Laurel, were able to provide funding for some of those things. So that's a little small step into what should branch out to be a very communal procedure for this.
I had a question. In the little video ahead of time, before you made your remarks, I think it said something... There was a slide... Piece, they said it was data-based.
Yes.
And so you covered in the slides the kinds of things you collect as data. But I assume there's also data behind this whole perspective and approach?
Yes.
Okay. Could you just say a little bit about that?
The data behind the perspect... Like, behind PBIS in general?
Yes, yes.
So the systems of PBIS have developed... Were developed in Oregon in positive supports for schools, and they have been in place and increased the outcomes. I wish I had specific numbers to get you, but I can get you some of that, that indicate that with these interventions, most of the Tier One interventions are supporting 80% of students and helping prevent behavior and escalation for 80% of students. And then you would, through your data, be able to see that they were finding that about 10... Five to 10% of students needed a little bit more intervention, a little bit more specific intervention, and that 1% to 5% needed some more intensive supports. And they were able to see that kind of pyramid approach throughout different schools, throughout nations and the country. And the core values, going back to having those components, are really what drove those outcomes, of making sure that it was data-driven, that it is collaborative, that it's community-based, and that it's explicitly taught and responded to consistently.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First, thank you for a wonderful presentation on the program. I know we have a lot of discussion about mental health initiatives and anxiety. So are we using... It's not necessarily a behavioral issue that is noticeable.
It is one of those internalizing behavior indicators. We're hoping through those universal screenings that we will be looking more to identify indicators that that is something that we should be looking at for those students. We... I think, Jody, you said this perfectly at one of our district-level meetings, that this is not really about just identifying misbehavior. This is looking at all behavior of students, whether that is the quiet, withdrawn student, and what that might indicate later on, because those behaviors could be indicative of underlying mental health and will allow us, through these screenings and data collection, to address those or have conversations of maybe they need some more social-emotional support. Maybe we need to have conversations with parents and start hooking them up with supports at a younger age to take care of it before it escalates to more high-risk behaviors in the middle and high.
Well, I'm happy to hear that we're building that into this program, because when we went to the NISBA conference, the School Board Association Conference, one of the speakers was talking about mental health and how really at the elementary level, we have so many opportunities to identify it with, whether it's the frequent flyers after vacation because they can't meet mom or dad or have trouble interacting. By the time they get to middle school, hopefully with all of those flags, we can identify it. So it sounds like we're building that into this model, which is great to hear. So thank you. The other question I have is you talked about rules and expectation and the culture of the school. So I wanted to elaborate a little bit on what are the difference... Like, the big differences between some of the schools where you might not be doing something here that you might be doing at another school?
So we're hoping that the core values will really limit the drastic changes from building to building, but there will be little nuances within language of particularly how responsible is worded in the cafeteria and how it is worded for what it looks like in the hallway. But since it's rooted in that core value, it still is... It's just minor tweaks in words that will... I'll still allow those students to all come together at the middle school and high school level and be able to respond to those core values of knowing what responsible is and what... Whatever our core values end up being.
Would you look at the differences in some of the minor nuances to see if maybe one... It may not ever be an effective nuance, but if it was, would that be something that would be discussed because we can see from this model or this culture, it might be better for the program?
So one of the things is the data will really tell us how... Will tell us where things might be occurring differently and will have us drill down into why that might be occurring. And some of that might be those little pieces of cultural differences between buildings that we can pull apart and look across district, across buildings, across environments within buildings and get that answered.
Because right now, if a student switches from, let's say, they go to Glemont and then they're moving, and the next year they come to Eagle, there's a whole new set of school rules.
Yes, yeah.
And it's hard for them.
That's what I was getting to.
And we also have faculty who teach in more than one building. So as we build more consistency there, it will be easier for all faculty. It'll be easier for any kids to transition. And then if you have this underlying core value and they come from all five elementary schools and hit the middle school, it's going to transfer over.
Okay. That's great. And I love the "big deal, little deal," because I think there are a lot of adults who could learn from that, including myself every now and then.
You will love the counseling presentation, and they will explain all those things, the zones of regulation and "big deal, little deal." Those aspects are really helpful.
Oh, perfect.
And to speak more about that mental health aspect, there is a checklist of having a mental health response at school, and the very first thing on the checklist is, do you have a positive behavior intervention and support? So we're starting that road of really driving down to get to that need for all students.
Great. Thank you.
Can I just add... Just add one thing, because it started out with questions about, you know, parents and parent involvement, but we all know some parents are very involved, read everything that comes home and, you know, tries to follow those things. But then we have parents who either can't or don't. How are we going to reach out to them?
So that's what I'm most excited about, is that we are essentially taking that piece and having it being added bonus. So it is going to be wonderful for those students that have that carryover to home, and we will kind of stop those conversations of, if only the parents would, because now we're just going to act. We're going to provide them as much connection and support and services within school that we can to help address the need regardless of what's going on at home. Similar to how we say, we can't... We can tell the parents that they need to read to their child and read to their child, but we actually can't make them read to their child. We can still provide that information in a variety of ways, whether that's our outreach through our website and resources in our website, parent actual in-house trainings or videos. We've discussed that as well, to give different options for parents to interact with this material regardless of their availability to get to school. But we're also going to say, even if they don't do any of that, how can we directly impact the student in the building? What services can we provide them right here every day that will impact their outcome in our community?
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's all set. At this time, we'd like to recognize visitors that are here on an agenda item. Is there anybody here who wants to talk about something that's on the agenda? Okay. Item number eight, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through five.
To move.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to ask about the... Is this the zip line? That... Which school is that one?
Eagle, zip line?
Yeah, the Eagles. I just wanted to check, you know, I know...
Safety.
Right, on safety. On safety, yes. Are there, you know, regulations on zip lines?
Yeah.
I'm sure that...
Yeah, we made sure everything was A-OK with... Greg Nolte was involved with that, as well as we have, you know, Project Adventure. Those type of things have to all meet certain criteria, and they have to be inspected regularly, so, yeah.
Similar, okay. Thank you.
Well, I... Do we have to inform, like, insurance or anything that we have one, and does it affect our liability insurance?
Did we have to do anything with insurance?
No. It's covered under the regular policy.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I skipped over that. Sorry about that. Thank you to all of the people who donated. We have donations from the Slingelms PTO, the High School Garden Club, the Eagle PTO, and the Bethlehem Shakespeare Support Group, which many are here this evening, so thank you for your donations. Item number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 10.
To move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just congratulations on some longtime retirees.
Oh, yeah. Any abstentions? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 10, support personnel, motion to approve. Oh, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through three.
To move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. It's number 11. Other action items. It is recommended to... That the Board of Education approve the following action items, one and two.
Some...
Motion, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we'd like to recognize any visitors on a non-agenda item. Yeah. Yep. You can either take the mic out, state your name, and raise the mic if you want, or you can hold the mic.
Hi, I'm Colleen Binachi, president... Co-president, actually, of Bethlehem Shakespeare Support Group. I just want to express our thanks here tonight. We're happy to have... To make the donation for the stipend for Ms. Sharp, who did an excellent job with our annual Shakespeare production. And I just wanted to publicly express the number of students and parents who really are committed to seeing the program continue. Over the past four years, we've seen an increase in the number of students that are willing to be part of the Shakespeare production. In the four years that I've been involved, it's essentially doubled, whereas this year we had 64 kids that were involved in cast and crew, which is amazing, and I can't even tell you the number of parents that have been involved. We also are just so grateful to the district for giving us the kids this opportunity. It's really a unique and enriching experience. And of the 12 seniors that were in the cast, five of them will be going on to pursue some type of major in theater arts in their college careers. We're also very grateful to Mr. Yura for his unique and wonderful vision that he's provided for 29 years, and to get teenagers every year to come forward and do Shakespeare for months is just amazing. So we really are grateful for the support from the Board, from the school district, and hope that that continues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? There is no proposal that it's going anywhere?
No.
No, that's a... No, because you were just... I got the impression that you got...
Yeah.
Thought that it may not, you know...
No, I think really we just wanted to kind of come forth and say, "Thank you," and also because it's new to have the assistant director. But given the number of kids that are involved, it certainly is warranted. 64, you know, kids, it's a lot of kids to manage, so we were happy to do that and want to just make sure that everybody recognize the amount of kids that are interested.
Okay.
And it's growing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody who would... Also would like... Is there anybody who would, also would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Hello, I'm David Van Louwen. I have a daughter who's a junior in the high school and twin daughters in the middle school. And over the years, I've been remiss in coming in and thanking you for all of the great work that you're doing and the leadership you're providing to the school. And over the last three years, one of the areas where I've seen some of the greatest strengths is your support for the theater program in the schools. And when we look at schools across the country, too often we see the arts being neglected, and it's something that we, I think, very rightly embrace here. And in particular, I've been struck by how Mr. Yura directs the kids, because he's not just teaching them to speak the immortal words of the bard, he's teaching them the fundamental tenets of critical thinking. And I became a big fan of Principal DeMell two years ago when he was giving the welcoming speech to the parents at the middle school open house, and he said, "The most important thing we can teach our kids is critical thinking." And critical thinking is about asking, who is saying it? What are they saying? Why are they saying it? And when I watch Mr. Yura directing the students in the play, that's exactly what he's teaching them. And I'm seeing the impacts and the benefits, not just in the way my daughter approaches her English literature text, but also in the way that she approaches reading the news, approaches her social study questions, approaches psychology. And so the benefits that our students are reaping is much more than just the theater arts. It's making them better citizens, and it's making them better students overall. So thank you so much for your support and for keeping the door open for Mr. Yura coming back next year.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on a non-agenda item this evening? Future meetings, we have upcoming Wednesday, January 10th, we have our Board of Education Retreat at 5:30 in the high school, and we have our next Board of Education meeting on January 3rd, 7 o'clock at the high school. I should have my glasses out so I could read that better. And Wednesday, January 17th, we have another board meeting at Hammagrail Elementary at 7:00 PM. And there is no need to reconvene to executive session. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So students, make sure you sign out, and if you need a signature, anyone else can sign.
Okay.